Make sure your microphone is on too.
So is it one meeting for the six and seven? Okay, because I have three meetings. I don't know why.
Uh oh. Okay, somebody's got something on.
Is that better?
All right. Yeah, when you're pulling into the zoom, make sure you hit the X out of the audio part. Okay, just about ready here. Okay, all right, let's get everybody, everybody's microphone on. Welcome, everybody, to our April 20th Council Workshop. Tonight, our topic is talking about our council priorities and discussing what?
It's not the landscape.
I know, yeah. So discussing our council priorities and the possibility of putting them into a resolution like we've done in previous years. So I guess we can, I don't know if everybody's had a chance, oh, go ahead, Katie.
Todd, here's a lot of information that we handed out to the council in the packets, so they all have copies. I'm not going to go through them verbatim, but I just want to show you what the, what the resolutions look like that the council has done in the past. So as the mayor was saying, in 2016 and 2017, the council took the time to, at the beginning of the year or the end of the year, identify what they considered priorities. So this is an example of the resolution that was adopted, and it looks like it was signed September 15th, 2015. And then this helped the budget process and also identified which areas of investments the council was interested in. So Todd, can you look at the next resolution? And then we did it again in 2017, and go back one page, Todd. There's a lot of paper, but I just want to share with the council that the, that they identified projects in the following categories. So stop right there. Under business support and recruitment, there was a desire to really outreach and engage our local businesses, large and small. And there were some ideas of things that we did, and I know Lisa expedited permits and applications. We also worked to identify business inhibitors and possible solutions. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is tonight, the council is looking at the landscape work. And this is kind of an outcome of that identification of a challenge that we had received from some of our businesses. The next category was park rec trails and open space. And again, I don't want to go through all of this, but you can see the different areas that the council at the time felt were important. Orchard Park, Barefoot in the Park, the Dumbo Trail, and the Spokane Riverhead Continuum Trail. And I will mention, we do have a presence in the coordination of the Continuum Trail. Transportation project, again, pedestrian connectivity. We have the Apple Way Signal Project, which I'm happy to say there's a traffic signal down there now. The Harbor Road Overpass, I'm happy to say it's under construction. And then we had miscellaneous pedestrian crossings that Ben is going to give you an update on tonight. And then there was also a shuttle service, and I'll be honest with you, that one really did not materialize and go anywhere. Though we did receive funding for it with COVID and everything, that one didn't go forward. And then finally, under miscellaneous, public art. And I think the Arts Commission has carried the water on that very well. And then creative policy regarding utilities and the undergrounding of those. And I know that's kind of a long-term ongoing effort. So I'm presenting this to you tonight to share with you the history of it. And then I'm going to go now to the strategic plan. And then when I'm done talking, we really want to hear back from council on some ideas about how we can go forward. So after these resolutions were passed, then the following year, the council took the time to work on a strategic plan. So then, excuse me, Todd's going to pull that up. So the first page talks about our home, our community, our vision, our mission, our invitation, and then our values. And I will touch on those. Integrity, partnership, civic pride, community investment, family-centered activities, quality of life, financial sustainability, and environmental sustainability. And then if you see under that, four boxes. So one box is the vibrant economy and business environment. The other box is safe, active, and engaged community. The other is sustainable resources. And then finally, quality infrastructure, quality facilities and infrastructure. And so what we did then was, Ben, or excuse me, Todd, do you want to go to the next page? There's some, these are called info graphs. It does a whole lot with pictures. It talks about our goals. It talks about building to capacity, our trails, dedicated open space, golf carts, pavilion and events annually. And then go to the next slide. This is the final one, there were some strategies and tasks. And again, I'm not going to go through all of this. You all have it in your packet. But I thought we could do a kickoff tonight workshop on this subject. So then finally, the final page is, if you wanted to reorganize it, a thought could be to go back to the strategic plan and use those four pillars. Todd, this will be the next slide, I think. A little more, a little more, right there. So this is the slide that if you wanted to, we could do a resolution. And what we would need to do is populate those four pillared areas. So Mayor, that was all I had, but I just thought it was going to be a great conversation for the council to digest.
Yeah, and I think, well, A, you know, we really haven't visited the strategic plan since we finished it. It's been a couple of years ago now. So it's probably a good time to revisit that a bit, maybe update some of the numbers and things like that. And then, you know, we have our capital facilities plan, we have the budget. But to memorialize in an easier to digest fashion for the public what the priorities are, I think is a much easier way to communicate. So I'm going to turn it over, just kind of manage the meeting. Whoever wants to maybe weigh in first on this and what process you guys want to take to go through this. Go ahead, councilor, we're done.
Katie, I appreciate the invoking to the strategic plan here. I think that's timely with respect to how we've promoted our objectives in the past. I'm ready to embrace that, I'd say outline, and begin to enumerate what we think are, what we'd like to act on and deliver in our 2021 year. At that, you know, with respect to quality of facilities and infrastructure, I'd like to bring forward the Kramer Parkway Overpass. I believe in transportation and specifically infrastructure. That is, in my opinion, one of the highest objectives we work to deliver in this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
When I was looking at this, I was, I appreciate the past examples and the outlines that you guys have done before. And so I had kind of thought about a few different ones for us as far as headers and then the specific tasks underneath, something we could talk about. But I thought trailhead should be one of our headers. I thought COVID investment, continuing work on COVID impacts. And APA, I don't really feel like I have a full understanding of. I think I know the dollar amount that we've been given, but how we're going to spend that money? And if the council's involved in those decisions. Transportation is a header with the same. I think that there's a lot of projects that are going on, so making sure that we're keeping track of those things, like you said, in an easily digestible format for everybody who's not as intimately involved in the discussions. I'd like to see a header of parks and rec like we've had before, because I think that there are some tasks and things that we've talked about that would fall under those, like the community gardens, potentially COVID-friendly events. I think that some of that could fall under the COVID piece, too. But there's also been discussion about dog parks and things like that, too. So, and then the miscellaneous category, that's kind of a catch-all. But one of the things that I would like to see on this is the Commission on Community Engagement. I know we haven't had a workshop on that, and I do want to bring that up in my comments at the regular meeting about getting that going. But I think for, for all these things, we've talked about community engagement, and so hopefully we can add that on.
I do think, Councilmember Kurt, that everything you mentioned could fit within the four pillars that have already been identified in the strategic plan. So the more we can expand on that and figure out what the subcategories are. So we're taking note of the input so we can try to put maybe an initial framework together.
Thanks.
Any other further comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question on how we might use this document in relationship to our priorities matrix that we've already done a couple of rotations on. Is this a, is this a revisit every quarter kind of a document? Or is this an annual? It's something new to me, so that's why I'm asking.
So, you know, when we started it, it was 2015 and then 2016, and then I'm not quite sure what happened that we didn't go forward with it the next year. But I see it more of an annual thing, as Katie has in the, in the draft exhibit. It's actually, this one's actually 21, 22 together, since we're already, gosh, almost halfway through 2021 at this point. And then make it a regular review every year. And again, you know, it does kind of, it pulls in, you know, the prioritization, prioritization matrix that you guys already did, capital facilities plan, in a much easier way to present to the public. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I remember 2016, 17, when the council worked on this, I thought it was a great idea. For some reason, it sort of fell by, fell by the, I'm sorry.
So I'd like to share, I think what happened was, we were doing the resolution, Mayor Protem, and then we shifted to the strategic plan in 2018. And then there was an election and COVID. And long story short, we never came back and took the strategic plan and populated this resolution. So I think that's what happened.
Yeah, I think what happened is just sort of evolved into where we were. I liked the recommendations, suggestions that come so far. I look at this as a document that, you know, granted, we can look at this on an annual basis. But I look at this as like the budget. It's a living document to me that along the year, there can be something come up that we feel is such a priority that we could add to this. I don't think we should be so rigid as to look at, this is only something we look at each once a year, and we have to stick to this. You know, let's be flexible with this document. Great ideas.
Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things I'd like to add, this is for 2021 and 2022, is doing something for the library. We did that study a couple of years ago now. Gosh, time has just flown. And there were some smaller things that we could do, things like shelving, and I believe make the front desk more ADA compatible. And it wouldn't cost us a lot of money, but I'd like to see that put in the quality of facilities and infrastructure. Won't cost us a lot of money, but will make a big difference in the quality of the library. I'm struggling to come up with sustainable resources. You know, when I, when I see that, I think of like wind power and solar power. And I apologize that I was not part of the strategic plan, but were there some ideas with that?
There is, but before I pull out the sheet, I think what we're thinking of is, when we build a road, when we build a park, when we build a picnic shelter, that we thought through the maintenance and operation of that thing. So when we put in a roundabout and we put vegetation in the middle of it, we think that, we acknowledge that, hey, we're going to, there needs to be water to it, and we need to take the litter out of it, and if something dies, we need to remove it. So I think it's taking care of what we own in the public. So whether it's a park, a road, a building, trailhead, it's really thinking about managing the facilities that we have.
So it's more like sustaining resource rather than sustainable resources.
So probably different.
Yeah. Thank you, that helps a lot.
One thing I think that we've kind of always been missing in the strategic plan, I know we all put a whole lot of work into this thing. It's a, it's a great start, but we never, we never really put any measurable metrics to it. And if you're going to have a strategic plan, you need to be able to, you know, check, check the boxes. Have we done this? Have we hit this metric? You know, have we reduced our power bill by X percent? You know, have we added the population, whatever the metrics are. And I think putting this priorities list together might help get us to that point. We have a lot of great, you know, tasks and things like that that were identified in the strategic plan. But I think, you know, as we go forward with this process, we need to put some measurable things in place. If we don't, we don't know if we're successful. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
It'd be like, would it act a progress reports as we move through?
Yeah, because I know when.
Interim of each quarter, something like that.
When you and I went to, I think it was one of the transforming local government meetings. I don't know if you were in the same meeting I was in, but they were talking about some of these dashboards and whatnot. And some of them actually had, I think one of them was Olympia, was one of the ones that they used as an example. They actually had, you know, it looked like a fuel gauge for each, each one, so we could kind of gauge the temperature and how we're doing on each one. So, but longer, longer term project, obviously. But I think, you know, with the work everybody's putting in on the capital facilities plan and putting those priorities together in the workshop that you guys are going to have on the 7th and this, I think we're, you know, on a really great path, you know, towards success and sustaining success with this.
So along those lines, Mayor and council, what I was thinking is, even though it's an, you know, we could go through the process annually, and I liked Mayor Protem's comment that it's a flexible document, and really, many of the projects are multiple years. So just because you don't crank it out for the first year or the second year, I mean, how long have we been talking about the Kramer Road Overpass? Or upgrade the library? These are multi-year efforts. So you can't just check the box and you're done. It's more of a continuation.
Right.
Good point.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I like that, you know, thinking of, yes, it's going to be multiple years, but we can still have little checkoff boxes, you know, steps. That's one of the things we learn in social work, you have steps to reach your goal. And, you know, with, again, I'm going to go back to the library assessment. There's a whole long list of things they recommended, including building a whole new building. But in the meantime, what we can do to the building now to help make it more ADA accessible, make it more feel better in there. And those are things we can, you know, new shelving, that's a step. New front desk, that's a step. ADA compatible checkout, that's a step that we could put on. And so, and you go to what the mayor was saying, so we know that we're accomplishing some. Because otherwise, we're just kind of going in the wind of them. But having those concrete steps that we said, yeah, look, we did this. You know, hey, look, we put this shelving in the children's area. You know, so I like that idea of the steps and someone, even though it might take five years to get this done, we know we've got this much done.
In one of the ways. It sure does. And so if you identify milestones, and then you put a date to a milestone, it doesn't mean that you've conquered the world in one day, but it looks like you've got there incrementally. And I really think that's the way to go. And it, yeah.
It makes you feel good.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I can proceed, like things that Holly is referring to about the library and even City Hall here, is that we can incorporate these things, like we've thrown out with the idea of City Hall. We expand the walls, and we do heating and air conditioning here. By having that on the list and being able to accomplish those things, it benefits down the road that if we're going to stay in a facility for a long period of time, we've upgraded it so we have the best utilization. But also to the point, if you get to the point, we outgrow that and move on. We've been able to upgrade that facility, which makes it very attractive to sell it or very attractive to rent it out. So we're certainly not stumbling through inadequate facility. But well, you know, now we suddenly have to put a hundred grand into it, where we could have put 50 grand into it. So it's, I think it's a good progression.
And I think it's important that we don't duplicate efforts. You know, this all has, all the pieces have to fit together. We don't want the capital facilities plan to say one thing, and the prioritization matrix to say something else, and the strategic plan to say something else. They all need to live and work together.
And one of, another value of this is that, and it, it needs to precede the budget, because the budget reflects this, right? And then when we go to hire people, and whether it's IT, or it's a road project, or it's a building project, or it's a police department project, or a library project, we're looking for those skills in the people that we hire. Because as all of you know, delivering public services, you know, 90% people pretty much. And it really helps to shape our organization, truly, priorities of the council.
All right, everybody's being fairly quiet tonight. Councilmember Langford, do you have anything you want to chime in with at all? I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Okay, I guess that was a fairly short discussion. So why don't we do this?
What would be next?
Well, that's what, that's what I was going to say. So what I'd like to ask, and of course, you know, council, chime in and let me know if you're amenable to this. Now that we've kind of gone through it a little bit, that's what we're looking for. My request would maybe be, you know, we should be kind of just go back and think a little bit, look at the strategic plan a little bit more, thinking, keeping the capital facilities plan in mind, and come up with some of those subcategories for the four that Katie put together that mirror the pillars on the strategic plan. What, what things will fit into each one? We don't want to, probably don't want a whole long list, you know, because then it just gets unmanageable. But I'd like to, like to see everybody's thoughts and input on that. And then maybe we can come back with some sort of a draft that we can move, you know, we edit, and then, you know, move forward, go to the next step.
So along those lines, if you want to send me, and I, Annie, I got all of your headers. And I heard a lot of questions and comments, but if you want to send me what headers or topics you want, and if you have a day in mind, a date in mind, 2021, 2022, 23, whatever, that would be great. And then we do have another workshop, let me get to my, the matrix here. And I was going to cover this at the council meeting as well. Find my matrix, there it is. We do have some openings in June and July without a 6:00 PM major schedule, or excuse me, without a 6:00 PM workshop schedule. So we could maybe tackle this in June and July. And then that lines up really well for the budget.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Go ahead, Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I really liked the topics that Annie called out earlier. So if you get that feedback from Annie and put it on some form of a format and fire it out to us, we could fill in the blanks from there, maybe.
Yeah, we can start, Katie, you and I can maybe get together late this week and early next and start to put that together.
Yep.
Sounds good. All right, well, I guess if there's no other comments on our workshop, we've, we've got not quite 40 minutes until our 7 o'clock meeting starts. So I guess we will put everybody on mute and turn off our videos, and we'll see everybody back at 7:00. Thanks.
I'll make a motion initially when we get into roll call receivers, that it'll be late.
Yeah. One more pass. Okey dokey, we're out there. There we are. Okay, let me get my script up here, everybody. Give me the second. All right. All right, it's 7:00. So welcome to our April 20th, 2021 City Council meeting pursuant to Governor Inland Lee's Order 20-25-12, issued May, May? Wow. January 11th, 2021, local governments in Phase 2 must allow persons to attend public meetings remotely. Provided, however, the proclamation further allows in-person meetings under limited conditions in addition to remote public meetings. At the present time, due to the conditions required to hold in-person meetings, the city of Liberty Lake will continue to hold all public meetings remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. City officials physically attending this meeting in the council chambers with me this evening are Councilmember Woodruff, Mayor Protem Kennedy, City Ministerial Katie Allen, and IT Technician Todd Henderson. Todd will be the manager for this evening Zoom meeting. I would like to take a roll call of the city council. At this, at this time, I will call your names. Please let me know if you are participating. Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Foyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Severs, I believe, will be late. Councilmember Dunn.
Good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
Councilmember Langford.
Present.
Thank you. All right. So city staff also attending remotely are City Clerk Anne Swinton, Operations and Maintenance Director Jim Camp, City Engineer Ben Schmidt, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, Police Chief Damon Simmons, Planning, Engineering, and Building Services Director Melissa Key, and City Attorney Sean Bautz. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment. When those times come, I will acknowledge public participation. There is a three-minute limit during this regular citizen comment period. For the record, please let me know your name and if you are a City of Liberty Lake resident or not. If you would like to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can do so by choosing the chat feature on Zoom. That will send a message to Todd, who is managing the meeting, and he will let me know who's speaking. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it is time for you to speak. First item on the agenda is the invocation. Councilmember Langford.
Thank you. You bow your heads with me, please. Dearly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us, and we thank you for, for spring, Lord. We thank you for the new blossoms that are coming out. Lord, as we progress through this, we find that many things are changing. And we ask you to protect our first responders, that you would take care of the critical care personnel and their various roles, Lord, and that you would especially bless our residents who fight each and every day to give that extra touch of humanity that truly makes Liberty Lake a city of neighbors. Thank you, Lord. Help us to remember that our actions touch thousands, and that we need to put them first. And that is our responsibility, given by the state, by the people, and the moral authority by yourself. Thank you, God, for hearing our prayers and blessing us in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under oath, indivisible. which it stands, one nation, under oath, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and protocol. We'll call the meeting to order and we will have the roll call once again real quick. So again, I will call your names and syndicate your presence since we're doing doing our meeting virtual. Councilmember Woodruff.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Kennedy.
Present.
Councilmember Langford.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hi, everybody.
Councilmember Kurt.
Present.
Councilmember Foyer.
Present.
And in case I don't see him, Councilmember Severs. Don't believe he's here yet. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, at this, thank you, thank you, Mayor. At this point, I would like to ask that we excuse Councilman Severs. He probably will be late ten fifteen minutes.
So we will note his his presence when he arrives. Do we have a second?
Right.
Move and second it. Any discussion on excusing Councilmember Severs for family reasons? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Councilmember Severs is excused.
Agenda approval. With the council's consideration, there are no changes or additions to my knowledge at this point. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move and second it. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved as printed. All right, now we come to citizen comments. So I'll look to Todd. I just have to put my glasses on so I can see if he's nodding.
Lisa Wilkinson.
Okay, we do have Lisa Wilkinson, who would like to make a citizen comment. Lisa, if you can unmute yourself. And Todd will start the timer at three minutes.
Good evening, council. I really appreciate it and thank you very much to all the citizens of Liberty Lake who are here and participating. My name is Lisa Willockson, as introduced, and my concern is over the proposed stadium that is being talked about just south of the city on Liberty Lake Drive. And I'm really concerned as a citizen of Liberty Lake, what where my tax dollars might go in having to help pay for all the road and infrastructure requirements that would be necessary to even make this possible halfway safely. And that I don't believe that my tax dollars should be being used to make improvements that are going to benefit one business person. My tax dollars should be going to benefit the community. I really don't mind paying taxes and believe it's my civic duty and my privilege because it's what makes Liberty Lake have the beautiful parks and walkways. And I love it. I run at five thirty in the morning and your guys are out there plowing the pathways in the mornings and they're every morning I wave and say hello. I don't know what he looks like yet because it's still been dark in the mornings, but it's wonderful to be part of a community that spends its money that way. But I do not believe it should be spent changing roads and infrastructure to help with private business. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Could you do me a favor? Could you shoot your email or phone number to Todd and either someone from staff or myself will follow up with you on the topic?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any other citizen comments?
Yeah.
Oh, Nadi. Nada for you.
Yeah, here. Was that was that me?
Hi.
Hi, Khatim Natarajan with the Liberty Lake Stream Water District. Just wanted to give two quick updates. One, just a reminder, I think I mentioned this last time I was participating in one of your city council meetings, that everyone should be getting notices about the backflow preventer inspections they need to have done. I know it's a pain, but we talked about this before. It's because of the contamination we had and we have to make sure that everyone's backflow preventer is functioning properly. And and some of the folks that I've talked to that have asked questions that have already had the test done, I've said that a few of them have had them come back and failed and needed to be fixed. It's not a big deal, but that those are the kinds of things that can cause problems. So appreciate everyone doing their part and getting their backflow preventer tested and certified. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was many folks may have seen some of the tree cutting along Liberty Drive by the golf course. Certainly not something that I was super happy about, but it's something a Vista needs to do to keep those trees and other vegetation away from the power lines. And probably ironically, the timing was pretty good because we had a pretty good windstorm this weekend. And I know a lot of trees came out different places and took out power lines, and that's what they're trying to prevent. So, you know, that's they're doing their job. I think some of that stuff will grow back and it'll look a little nicer after spring is over. But that's the explanation for that if anyone didn't know. And that's what I had. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else have? Anne, do we have, did we have anything sent in by our four o'clock written deadline that we need to note?
Mayor, council, we did not receive any written comments prior to or up to the four o'clock deadline this afternoon.
Great, thank you very much. All right, with that then, we will move on to announcements, proclamations, special presentations. So I will turn the floor over to Chief Simmons for the introduction of one of our newly related police officers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope everyone's having a pleasant afternoon. And now it's with pleasure that I introduce our newest police officer, Officer Michael Merricoin. Officer Merricoin comes to us from the Orange County Sheriff's Office in California, where he served as a sergeant. During his fourteen years with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, he received several honors, including a departmental commendation and nomination of deputy of the year. Officer Merricoin is an instructor in several law enforcement disciplines. Officer Merricoin holds a bachelor of science degree in business administration and a master of science degree in administration of justice and security. He's been happily married for twenty years. And at this time, I think Officer Merricoin is present, I'll give him a chance to say a couple of words and introduce himself.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate it. I don't know if you can you guys hear me? I'm new to the Zoom thing. No, I'm just glad to be here. It was a lifestyle change and just a better quality of life than my wife and I were seeking up here in the Northwest. Took a lot of thinking since I had only nine more years to a full retirement to go. And but like I said, quality of life was just a lot more important to us. It was worth the money given up. And heck, I got to come work for the agency that I really wanted and been driving around the community for two weeks. It's an awesome community. I've never been ever, ever in patrol where I felt bad because I could not wait to wave to everyone who was waving to me. So, super awesome, super brand new to me. And I hope that I can do a great job for this city, for my agency, and going forward is have that wonderful relationship with all you guys as well.
Thank you, Mike. We're happy to have you and I know we've met a couple of times already, so look forward to seeing you out on the street.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chief, did you have anything else?
No, ma'am. And hopefully, one of the upcoming city council meetings, we'll introduce the the other Mike that's coming on board. Michael's out.
Yep. You guys need to start working on some new names.
Little Mike and Big Mike. There's definitely a size difference, so.
There definitely is. All right. So we appreciate both of you being here. So next we have a presentation, Tourism Recovery by Visits Spokane, Meg Winchester and Jamie Rand are here. I know I saw Meg, didn't I see Jamie?
Yeah, we're both there.
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, thank you. You just found another one part of my screen. So welcome, thanks for joining us. Obviously, I I'm pretty much up to speed on what you guys are doing, but I'm excited for the council and and the president to hear what you guys are doing in Visits Spokane.
Thank you. Well, we're always so proud to be able to report everything that we've been able to do with the wonderful community that we have. So Mayor and council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you today. We know this past year has been so difficult for all of our residents and businesses and Visits Spokane has worked hard to support all. In March of twenty twenty, we looked at forecasts to realize that tourism and hospitality, our industry is going to be. We made the difficult decision at that to lay off nine years and realign our budget During this time, we collaborated with GSI, DSP, the Valley Chamber of Commerce and the West Plains Chamber to begin to see where we could support one another and lift up our community with advocacy and information. One of the results of this was the ask to the county commissioners for marketing dollars both internally to Spokane County and for a targeted outbound marketing campaign and safety and amazing outdoor opportunity. Jamie's going to be presenting at this in a few minutes of the two point five million that was allocated to Visits. We also looked at our antiquated membership model and reimagined it. We now have gone to a community-based membership model that's inclusive to all of our partners and will give support and marketing opportunities that many didn't have in the past. We also moved, we had an office in the Wells Fargo Building on the tenth floor downtown and were able to move out of that. Jack Keith and Washington Trust, who owns the building, are such amazing partners to us. So we've currently moved into a small area in the convention center in order to create a better synergy and to save marketing dollars. We're continuing to work on a hybrid model, both from home, as you see both Jamie and I are at home right now, as well as as starting to move into some meetings into the convention center as well. And as tough as this all was, the future is starting to look brighter. With adoption of the increasing of the TPA from two dollars to four dollars that started April first, that gives us additional sustained funding source to continue the marketing efforts. We did not raise that with your couple thousand Liberty Lake. It is currently staying at the two dollars, but we hope to to possibly raising that to the four dollars as well. And we're looking forward and watching trends and are certain, we're certain we're going to have a robust summer. Everyone is dreaming about traveling right now and we have the perfect destination for those seeking a welcoming, safe and varied getaway or vacation. And looking to twenty twenty two, we're positioned to really work toward our twenty nineteen successes. As one example, and two, which we all know was the best for both convention and winter tourism for our county, we had, we measured it, having seventeen conventions, a convention for us is that meets in the convention center with over five hundred people room. And since we were, since we lost most of those in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, our team and partners did a great job of booking those. And we currently have nineteen city conventions on the books with time to continue to book those. What that means is when we have a very robust convention in our downtown core, it pushes everything out. And so all hotels outside of the downtown core and everything really benefit for that compression. And so we're excited that we've got nineteen with a couple more on the books that most likely will book. And then with the podium coming online and the list of events that they've booked and that are in the pipeline, we're looking bright. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Rand, who's our chief marketing officer, to talk a little bit about our our marketing campaigns for twenty twenty and what we have looking forward to the future unless there's any questions for me now, but we can definitely do some of those at the end as well.
Thanks, Mike. Can everybody hear me? Yeah? Yeah, okay. So, thank you for having us today. I will I will move along as quickly as I can. So this, the campaign that we're talking about, just to be clear, is June twenty twenty through April of twenty twenty one. We're looking to renew some funding to keep the campaign going, but but as of right now, the campaign will end in total at the end of this month. So the the goal, we got a lot of goals, but this is our overview. In that time period, we were given two and a half million dollars. And and with that two and a half million dollars, we booked five million dollar and five million dollars in hotel room revenue for Spokane County in the worst year of hotel occupancy in history. The two to one return was good, right? And we fared a lot better than our competitive cities. Spokane County had an occupancy rate double that of Seattle and had a higher revenue per available room, which is the basic bottom line metric that every hotel uses to measure profitability than Seattle and Portland in twenty twenty. And so our hotels performed much, much better. However, I would preface, I would like to say though, that having said that, I all of our hotels suffered greatly. And I so I don't I don't want to ever minimize the the loss and the impact that we've had, but comparatively, in a much better situation. So when we when we did the campaign, we had some goals. Overnight room stays in the Spokane County area and the Spokane region are always is always the primary goal. We wanted, we wanted the campaign to feel safe and to promote things that were safe because we didn't want to put people's lives at risk or encourage reckless behavior. We wanted to position Spokane as a safe, but also an attractive alternative to Portland and Seattle. We felt like we had a good enough understanding of the day-to-day life of someone living in Portland that we could communicate an attractive alternative. And we wanted to develop creative that brings the brand to life and that can last, most importantly, after the pandemic is over. Otherwise, it's a lot of work for a very short amount of time. And so what we decided to do was come up with animals. The we and there was a lot of reasons why, but we started the campaign with the idea that animals roam and people travel, right? And so it went, it started as ready to roam and then it moved to room to roam. And room to roam is where we've always settled. And sadly, in a way, ready to roam was supposed to be the message for phase one and room to roam was for phase two, and we never really got out of phase two. So room to roam kind of was what stuck. And actually, I'm really happy that we did it because it was the right message. And so why did we use animals? There's a lot of reasons, but there's a couple that are the most obvious. You don't have to put characters and animals en masse and no one wants to see people en masse. And if you put people en masse, you can't use it when the pandemic's over. The other one is that they're fun and they made people happy. And so people usually don't make decisions unless it changes how they feel. And we thought that everyone felt kind of sad in Portland and Seattle. So we wanted to, we wanted to give them a message that was the an anecdote almost to that. And so and then it comes with risk, right? Standing out comes with risk. Putting illustrated animals on live action video and in real photography is an enormous risk and can go really badly, but it did not. And so this is what it ended up looking like. This is just samples of the creative that that it launched. We we did everything from wrapping the buses in the Seattle Transit in downtown and they are still wrapped. I actually got a photo from a friend today that was downtown and saw them. And so we have billboards in Portland and Seattle. We ran print ads in every relevant regional travel publication. We had I ninety creative specifically to get people off the highway. We had an incredible amount of digital. Obviously, that that was the stuff that was tracked. But but the campaign was robust, the tactics were relevant, and and I think that the creative landed. Because it's a city council meeting, I wasn't sure if I'm allowed to show YouTube videos of the campaign, but I thought I would try. Maybe hopefully it will lighten the mood. Let me try it this way, though.
Yeah, give it a try, Jamie.
Let's see. Okay, here we go. Can you guys see that?
It's kind of small, but give it a shot.
All right.
Here we go.
And so we weren't sure if if it landed, but then I we had people that were emailing us specifically saying, I don't know who made these, but these are amazing and the only thing that's made me happy. And I was like, we've nailed it. And so that it's a good brand position for Spokane to be in. The the thing that I have, I've lived in Spokane three years and the overwhelming, most obvious thing to me about Spokane and the entire this entire area is how kind and nice and inviting and warm the people are. And so I felt like we tried to create that, right? And so as we move into spring, this is the new creative that's gone out. This is Marv the Turtle. He's not much of a golfer for obvious reasons. So their golf is a big part of the promotion going forward. It's a organized activity that's outside, that's safe, and and we want to support, you know, the golf courses throughout the county. And so this is one of many efforts, but it's one that I thought was relevant to show so you guys can see what is going out. The other thing I'm really proud of is that I'm always can, I'm convinced that you can't market a place without mark using people from the place because they know the place. And I haven't lived here very long. And so almost all And I haven't lived here very long. And so almost all of it, from the illustrator to the animator, animator, to the media buying, to the woman singing Deck the Halls in the Holiday Video. Every single creative person possible was used. And that, so from Cloon Hosmer to treatment. And I even had agencies that actually worked together and were communicating and being really nice to one another. It was an amazing community effort. Peak Media, we have photographers, there's actually two pages of our friends at the Inlander Power Marketing, so many people that we worked with were amazing. And I'm really proud of that. I, you know, when I, when I went in, I said, you know, the goal is to book room nights. But I, but more importantly, I want to prove that to Portland and Seattle that there's creative powerhouse of, of people here. And that we can do work that they didn't expect. And so at the end of the day, good creative usually gets the objective done and it did. We booked, so we have multiple attribution technology that we use to be able to track. So if you click on a, a visit Spokane ad and you live in Portland and you book a room in the next so over many hours, we know that you booked it and where you booked it. And so we use that as our attribution model to measure our success. And so these are track transactions. This is not a, this is not a number where we're speculating. This is a transactional number of 5 million. We know that on to that 20,444 hotel bookings, keep in mind a hotel booking can mean multiple nights and multiple rooms. Right? And so on 20,000 transactions, basically we booked 5 million. And 11,404 arrivals, we use another attribution technology that measures whether people actually show up. After they've seen or interacted with our advertising. So that's how we get those numbers. But more importantly, we put a quarter of a, of a, of a, of a billion impressions into Portland and Seattle. Over like a five-month period. They've never seen so much in Spokane in their entire lives. And so, and it did successfully build the occupancy numbers. This is the star data report. What you're looking at is occupancy numbers. This big arch dotted one is 2019 for the all of Spokane County hotels. This, right? This is a, a very good year in trajectory, right? What you're seeing in orange here is the, the solid numbers here are, are, this is Spokane Valley in 2020. Right? And the blue here is the county, all the Spokane County hotels in 2020. And, and, and then the purple is downtown. But when you look at it comparatively, whether it's Albuquerque, Phoenix, Boise got us for a little bit, but they tried to, never mind. Boise got close, but, but, but you can see they over, overdid the value. But that, that part at this point, right? If remember where Idaho was announcing, the whole world, they were open. So literally the criteria at that point was being open. And so, but you can see how much better we fare than downtown Seattle, Portland, all of our competitive set. These are hard numbers on, on our occupancy. And so while our hotel year suffered tremendously, it, it, you can see in downtown Seattle, it can be much, much worse. And I don't mean to laugh because this is really sad and they've had a really hard time. So. So there's that. And then these are all the nice things that people said. And while it's always nice to have people say really nice things, it's always nice to actually get awards. And so we won an entire table of awards. In fact, we won more awards at the American Advertising. Competition in Spokane than any other single campaign had won in 20 years. So we nailed it. People liked it. It was a success. And roaming forward, we're doing all kinds of great things. We are moving, we launched a new website, visitspokane.com is a brand new website. Liberty Lake has their own section on that website. We do still own visitlibertylake.com. Which is the, you know, the domain that we, the vanity domain that we use to promote the city. And so we're excited about moving forward with a new site and Liberty Lake's role in that. And we're, as Meg said earlier, our new partnership model opens up a whole new, a whole new way for us to be able to market the entire region. Because as I said in an interview once, that we are not a membership marketing organization, we are a destination marketing organization. And to be that, we got to market the whole destination, including our folks at Liberty Lake. So I thank you so much for your time today. And if there's any questions, I, I'm happy to answer.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Dunn.
Hey Jamie, I just want to compliment you on the energy and actually the results that you've obtained in the campaign. I have some kind of some prior career experience in terms of marketing and the actions that you take. And I have great respect for, like I say, the energy that you command in this action and then the results that I think you've, you've got here for visits Spokane. So I appreciate your work.
Well, thank you, Dan. I, I really appreciate that. That's very kind of you.
I will say Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, but do I remember you or Meg saying that the campaign was actually used in a marketing class that you dubbed? Am I remembering that correctly?
Oh, so yeah, so they asked, the, the, the head of marketing for Portland State University emailed us. And asked if it was okay if they used it as a lesson in their class about marketing in terms of strategic positioning. And I said, oh no, please do. Tell all the Portland students about how great Spokane's creative team is. I said, absolutely. And it's funny, I, I was before this meeting today, I was speaking to one of the GU marketing classes. Right? And the nice thing is, is when we have that kind of creative success, then, then we can recruit and keep people to stay here, you know, and stay in the area. And so I, I, it's, it's good for business Spokane, but better, better for the county. And I'm really happy that, you know, we started, because you never know, if, if Dan knows anything about creative, he also knows that I could, I could totally fail. I'm the next one. So it's, you take the good stuff when it comes.
Great. Well, great work. And I know things are starting to look up and I'm looking forward to 2021 being much better and getting back to normal. They may also have any other questions or comments for Meg or Jamie? No? All right. Thanks for coming, guys. I really appreciate it. And I'll, I'm sure we have a meeting sometime this week that I'll talk to you at. Thanks. All right. I will note real quick that Councilmember Seaver has joined us around 7:10. So Ann, I don't, I'm not quite sure where you keep track of that, but he was, he has joined.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're, you're welcome. So we'll move on to reports. So first we have city council reports. Is there anybody who'd like to, on the council who'd like to report on anything that's transpired or anything they want to just bring our attention to over the last week or so? Councilmember Woodruff.
Thank you, Mayor. The Friends of the Library are excited to have both summer activities this year. We'll have a table of wholesale on June 19th from 7:00 to 4:00 in the library parking lot. It will be outside, obviously, following all COVID recommendations and restrictions in place at the time. So stay tuned for more information on that. The Friends will also have a scaled down summer soiree at the Liberty Lake Wine Cellars. It will be on July 14th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I just made the purchase of tickets live on our website, which is libertylake, sorry, libertylakefriends.org. Go there, you can click on the summer soiree 2021 button and it will take you to a description of the soiree. And the link to purchase tickets, which are $30 this year. So it's just exciting to have things back a little bit anyway. Again, it will be mostly outside. We'll be following all COVID restrictions, Dan recommendations at the time. So we hope to see a lot of people there. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Woodruff. And let's make sure we get that on the reader board and everything as well. All right. Any other councilmembers? Any report? Councilmember McCurt?
I had my first virtual office hour, coffee time. Can you guys hear me?
Annie, we're having a little bit of trouble with your audio.
Yeah, I was just asking if you guys could hear me. Can you hear me at all?
You're kind of muffled now.
Okay, hang on a second. See if I can. Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. Sorry about that. It said something about my microphone not working. So I had my first office hour last week, coffee time on Thursday mornings, which went well. I had three people from the community and we ended up talking for about an hour and a half, actually. So it was, it was super fun. I, I really enjoyed it a lot. Topics that we talked about, there was a lot of discussion about the dog park. A little bit of discussion about community pools. And then the, the last topic that we talked about the most, I think, was getting citizen input. I think people had read the article, the little column in the splash and have been a part of the meetings and were interested in, in moving forward with that. So. That was really good. And just want to remind everybody that if people are interested in being a part of city council, the application period is coming up in May to. To be a part of city council and to apply with the county for that, to run for office for filing week. And I did notice in some of Mayor Kaminsky's updates that people who had been interested in city council, some of our applicants. Have been applicants for our planning, for our commissions and stuff. So I'm really excited to see people who were wanting to be engaged, finding different ways to do that. And I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Any other councilmembers? All right. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Seaver.
Yeah, I'll just report that we've done a number of STA board meetings as of late. And a majority of their efforts have been focusing on some big projects for infrastructure, additional routes along the north division corridor. And a lot of funding that they're trying to bring in at the federal level. They've, they've weathered through the storm of last year pretty well. I also just mentioned, it's been interesting to hear how proactive STA is about bringing in electric buses, rechargeable buses. They've got one, they've, they're going to get more. They've got that slated and despite all their efforts there, they actually have been mentioning some alternative routes and some things for the city of Liberty Lake. So I'll hope to bring back more on that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to Mayor's report. I don't have a lot to give into tonight because I think most everything that I could say is on Katie's report, but I will point out a couple of things. Just to confirm, the 4th of July parade down by the lake is canceled again this year. And though the fireworks, both in, in the city and down the lake will be taking place. Obviously, you know, keep in mind all, you know, social distancing and possibly watching from your car. But I, we did confirm that the, the traditional parade parade is canceled for a second year in a row. So hopefully next year we'll be back to normal. Another thing, so thank you to Councilmember Dunn for, I'm not quite sure how he, how he came across it. But he shared a 2015 t-shirt that was done at the opening of the pedestrian bridge. Which kind of is spurring us to working on a 20th anniversary t-shirt. So more to come on that. We've talked around the idea of a pin, but pins get put in drawers. If we can, if we can put together a 20th anniversary t-shirt for the city, I think that'd be a great way to help everybody celebrate. And let me see, one more. Oh, yeah. So for the council, I, I put a little bit of this on my weekly report. But SRTC interlocal agreement, we've had probably eight or nine meetings by now. A lot of attorney work to update that interlocal agreement, which rearranges a little bit. What municipalities and agencies have, have how many votes? And also includes a new provision for tribal membership to be offered. It's not, they, we offer it, they haven't accepted yet, but that will be coming to you on the 5-4 agenda. So right now it's been approved to be approved. So what you'll see in the, the agenda for the 5-4 meeting is the, what's hopefully the final draft. And then each municipality is going to be, you know, approving or, or not. I believe it's 75% participation to approve that. So when that comes out, if you have any questions before the meeting, just let me know. And then we'll obviously have some time to discuss during the May 4th meeting. That's it for me, for my report. Tim, open. Library Board.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, I have no update from the library trustees this evening. We have our regularly scheduled meeting next week and I look forward to bringing some more meaningful and exciting information to the library trustees at your next council meeting. However, I would like to echo Councilmember Woodruff's comments during the workshop that based on the strategic plan, that there are some small projects that we can actually tackle for the library that will have long-term beneficial improvements to service the community, you know, to service the, the service that we provide to the community. So for now, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. And Tim, thanks for your report. And just a quick note, I don't think it's on Katie's report, but at the next meeting, we will be appointing a new library trustee. I believe we've already reached out to the person. And so it will be, be on the agenda for the council to approve next meeting.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, Planning Commission, Jamie Baird.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We had a very productive planning commission at our last round. You'll be getting a taste of that in your workshop this evening. We did ratify our findings, conclusions and recommendations for the proposed amendments to the landscape code. And also to our sign code. So you guys will be seeing that come across your desk soon as well. And then we also had our first workshop on the 2021 proposed comprehensive plan and code amendment with the Meadowwood Technology Park. Their comprehensive plan use, or land use and zone change request. So we had a really informative workshop. We asked a lot of questions and we'll be workshopping that again. So we're eager to see what they bring back to the table. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions if you have them.
Well, anybody on council have any question for Planning Commission? Looking forward to our workshop coming up here shortly on the landscape board. Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Now on to our city administrator report, which is, is growing, which is great.
I know, we're up to two pages and thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. Lots of updates from a lot of different people, so I'll kind of move this pretty quickly. We probably have all heard of the American Rescue Plan. When the mayor, Pro Tem and I met on Friday, as well as the mayor, we wanted to really get this in front of you. And so we want to talk about the guiding principles for how this money is going to be spent. And I want to be honest with all of you that the details are not apparent yet. And so we're watching very closely. There's, there, and I will mention, we are actually getting emails from vendors saying, other cities are buying this with their recovery rescue plan dollars. Why don't you buy this product? So there's a lot of marketing going on. We want to make sure that we are following the guidelines and the timelines. And there isn't a big rush to spend all this money. It is, we haven't, as the plan is currently described, we have until 2024 to do that. So a combination of future discussion with the council, we think is going to be very important as to how we're going to prioritize the distribution of these funds. And so I would like to add another workshop in late May. So that we can start thinking about what I would call maybe buckets of where you guys can identify future expenditures that we would want to invest in for our community. So I'll leave it at that. Mayor, was there anything else?
I've been attending a lot of calls with various organizations, whether it's MRSC or NLC or, you know, the litany of alphabet soup. With, with regards to very high-level discussions on how, how to use these. You know, focus on growing jobs when it comes, when it comes to our local businesses. Revenue recovery, utilities, infrastructure broadband is a huge issue for a lot of communities. We have pretty good coverage here, not, not 100%, but it's a big equity issue with regards to broadband coverage. Right now it's getting a lot of national attention. So, you know, if we put something on the agenda for, you know, later in May. We will have some, some initial buckets, as the case says, to start talking about, just at a high level. And then kind of like we're talking about with the strategic plan, let's hit, you know, hit our high level, three or four bullet points and a couple more detailed items under that. But until we get more guidance, it's going to be hard to get too detailed. From what I remember, we're getting half of the money sometime this summer and the other half will be, we won't get until 2022. But it is a lot for us to spend. And I think we can do a lot of good, both here at the city and for some of our, our local businesses and even nonprofits.
So as the mayor was saying, there is a lot of places that have information. I listened to a Zoom meeting with the chamber, the US Chamber of Commerce. The financial, excuse me, yeah, financial officers, municipal, municipal financial officers have guidelines. And I'll just be very honest with you, they, they are very, very much under development. So the guidelines are not all nailed down yet and we just want to make sure that we do it right. So with that, I'm going to keep moving. I think number two is some positive news. I received a phone call from Kathy McMorris Rogers Office. From someone that works for the International Guard, asking if we wanted to have a mobile vaccine clinic here in Liberty Lake. And I have to tell you, just a whirlwind of a week, we set it up. So let me go over what that looks like. In partnership with STCU, their corporate headquarters on Signal and Mission, they're going to partner with us. And so it's actually a big, great big parking lot. And they reached out to them and they were right there to be a team player with us. And they reached out to them, and they were right there to be a team player with us. So we have scheduled it for May 7th is the first dose. May, excuse me, June 4th is the second dose. We identified 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the reason for that is students that go to school during the day, we want to make sure that it's open after school so that if you wanted to get a vaccine, 16 to 30-year-olds in our community are the highest growth rate of COVID positive testing. So we also want to make sure that it was open during business hours, so people that work in Libri Lake or residents that work outside of Libri Lake have an opportunity to get registered. As I mentioned, it's co-sponsored with STCU, strongly encourage advanced registration. Tate Hunter is putting together a flyer, and we have some volunteers that are going to help us distribute it. And so looking forward to May 7th, and I think they've identified close to 500, they have room for close to 500 people, and then I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the room to help. And the International Guard, who's going to be administering the vaccine.
And the city will be providing and helping set up the tents and everything. And, you know, shout out to STCU. I basically called them, asking, looking for permission to use the big empty parking lot, and it developed the partnership very quickly. So they're always a great community partner.
So May 7th is a Friday, and stay tuned, and we'll start getting information out to our community. Number three is, if you remember not last year, but the year before, there was a Cornhole Tournament at Orchard Park, and the Hub is wanting to have another event, and right now it's tentatively scheduled for late August. This is an opportunity for the city to partner with the Hub and provide some support for the event. This is kind of, it's still in the planning stages. There is more information that will be developed, and we're just keeping our fingers crossed that we can have the event. I know Jen texted me that she has got a phone call that a couple of goats got out. So I want to ask, Jen, are you available to give us an update on the event, or are you tied up?
Yeah, I'm in between goat text messages, so I can give a quick update. Yeah, so the Hub is looking to co-sponsor, now that FOPP has dissolved and is no longer sponsoring the event. I believe that Phil is working with Joe Frank still on the event, as far as Joe Frank with Greenstone, not Joe Frank with FOPP. But they were looking to co-sponsor with the city, similarly to what we used to do with FOPP during the experience in the park, the symphony, the movies, the Fourth of July, et cetera. And so we had a really nice conversation the other day about how the city could support the Hub during the Cornhole Tournament. And some of those options could be something similar to what we've done in previous events with FOPP, where the city sets up and tears down tables, chairs, canopies. We rent those items for them if need be. We support the event with enough staff to be there to help with setup and tear down, that kind of thing. There is a line item in the budget that has been in the budget for a few years now, that is a community and business support line item that's $5,000. It was brought up a few years ago with city council. So it is a funded line item for co-sponsoring events such as this, you know, in a city park on a city property. So, yeah, that's kind of the goal with them. We had a really good conversation. I think it's definitely doable, particularly now that FOPP has, again, dissolved, and the support for FOPP that the city has given will look different this year. And then, of course, hoping that events are able to happen and what we hope for them to be. Are there any questions?
Yeah, that's a question.
Well, Jen, basically a comment, I'm really glad to hear that if we had stampede and lost two goats, you're able to get those valuable assets back to the city. So thank you for your effort there.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, yeah, Jen, very much grateful for your participation regionally in observations of events and activities. Recently got word from you insofar as what is or is not allowed. Based on what you've seen so far, is an event like, you know, the Libri Lake Throwdown possible? Can we say it's possible to do that right now?
So, yeah, it is possible in Phase 3. We're currently in Phase 3. We cannot proceed to Phase 4. Cornhole is in late August. And so with all good intentions and hopes, we will be in Phase 4 or wide open by then. But even if Cornhole were to happen in Phase 3, yes, there would be the possibility that we could, under current conditions in Phase 3, we could have that event. Obviously, there are stipulations, and there are rules and regulations from the governor's guidance. But yes, that event should be able to happen without any issue, assuming we don't go backwards. Now, really, the biggest issue is if we go backwards, it's not so much can the event happen or not, it's really the capacity of the property or of the event site. So it's really going to affect capacities if the events go backwards.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Ben. Okay, moving along. Ben Smith has been working on a lot of different projects, and he'd like to give you guys all an update.
Hello, everyone. Sorry about that. I was on mute. Some pretty big news. We got the bids back for our pedestrian flashing beacons, and just wanted to let everybody know, these are the Country Vista at Eagle Bend, Country Vista at Eagle, and the Wind Rocket Autumn ones. And the bids came back very favorably, so we'll be bringing that for council for the next council meeting. But it might allow us, because of how well they came back, to accelerate the schedule a little bit, which was pretty exciting, I thought, and maybe get all of them done next year, depending. The Kramer repairs, so we also sent those out for bid. These are those crucial repairs to keep the road intact through the rest of the year until we can perform the rehabilitation project next year. We're still looking at pursuing a grant for that to help rebuild the entire Kramer Parkway from the new bridge connection all the way down through to the connection in front of the Legacy Ridge, Phase C that's going on right now. And then the most exciting news I have is that the Kramer Bridge is all stamped, signed, and ready to go out to ad next week. So we're really looking forward to that. This has been a long road to get here, and this is a big deal, so.
Ben, how long does that stay open, and when do you expect it to open?
So that should be open for a month. And we're targeting May 26, I believe, is the close date on that, but I will confirm.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Good work, Ben.
Yeah, really excited. Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, question, Ben, is Kramer Parkway at this hour closed, the connection between Sprague and Country Vista?
It is currently.
Is there a projection on an open date for that?
Yeah, so what we're going to try to do is, this will be mid, let's see, it'll be mid-May when we're looking at opening that. But what we're going to try to do is tack on all the repair projects. It's actually the same contractor who is the apparent low who's doing the work right now, so that we can just roll into the existing closure and get all the repairs done at the same time. So it may be a little bit later, but right now the schedule is mid-May to open that up.
Gotcha. Just for consideration, it's a great pedestrian route, and if there's some way that we could keep it close to vehicles but somehow enable pedestrians, I think the community would appreciate it.
That's a great point. Let me see what I can do to create some signage and keep that open.
Ben, Mike Tenny, Mayor Pro Tem, and the mayor had to step away from our desk just for a moment. I have a question for you, clarification. You mentioned about the flashing lights. The bids came in, they're very favorable, that's exciting. It's all great news that you're giving us. Did I hear you say, though, that we'd be able to step up procedure? And is it going to still be done this year, correct? Not next year?
Yes, sorry. So the ones that we just went to bid for, those three would be done this year. But because the apparent low came in at about half the engineer's estimate, that leaves a lot of flexibility in that budget to maybe try to do everything else next year rather than wait till that third year. And I can't promise anything based on the bids, but that's, I was really excited for how low the bid came back.
Another question. I believe you mentioned in a previous meeting, haven't we already ordered several of the flashing beacons?
We have, yes.
And we still have the two that you're going to be removing, or actually, there's four you'll be removing over on Beacon, correct?
Correct.
Elsewhere. That's great. That's a great financial savings for the city to be able to do that. Thanks, Ben. That's great information.
Welcome.
Councilmember Flyer, sorry I had to step away, my charger's not working.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions for you, Ben. First one, I know you're a really smart guy. And when I get a little super low bid, I often ask why.
Yes, that was a great question, and I looked into that in detail. Everything prevailing wage is, are being performed, double-checking their quantities and numbers. They looked within the range that we've been getting before. I think the mobilization and traffic control were a little bit lower. And so we'll just have to work through that during construction. But as you probably know, sometimes that's a place where you can add in additional cost in bids to help make up for other things. And so I think they're probably just trying to give us an honest price, from what I can tell, to get it done. Great question.
Thank you. Second question, if I can, is I thought I heard you say that the Kramer improvement was going to go to the Legacy Ridge entry. Would it not go all the way to the city limits?
Yes, so it will go to the city limits. This is essentially three phases of a project is the base, the best way I can describe it. So right now, the city limits and the intersection down there, that section up to that TransCanada easement is going to be completely repaved because they have to install really deep water and sewer lines. So that whole roadway width has to be completely redone. Then, as part of the frontage improvements for the Legacy Ridge, Phase C, they're basically doing the widening up to the center of the eastbound travel lane all the way up past Valley Vista Drive. So they're installing curb and gutter through there. So they're essentially doing a quarter of the roadway all the way along there as part of the frontage improvements for the private development.
So that's already being addressed, then?
That's already being addressed, yep. And so then these repairs that I was just talking about, those are spot areas where Kramer is failing that we want to address right now before we go through the whole summer construction season and before winter to fix those. And then there's the bridge project, which will link in to Kramer on the north side. And then the final closure of all that will be this rehabilitation project that we're targeting the grant for. And so we should have gorgeous new road that has a 20-year lifespan all the way from city limits up through the new Kramer Bridge, when this is all said and done, is the plan.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Moving along, I covered most of this at our 6:00 p.m. workshop. But just a reminder for the audience that may want to hear, would you have a Trailhead workshop? I want to mention in the council, Councilmember Kurt brought this to my attention. It was something I had read earlier as well. On the matrix that identifies all of our workshops, it says Trailhead Driving Range. That is not correct. May 7th is the Trailhead workshop on the whole facility. Lunch is 11:30 to 12:00. The retreat will be 12:00 to 4:30. The location is Meadowwood Tech, and you will be receiving directions and a three-ring binder of all the materials that we have been passing out over many, many months, and I think years. You'll get financial information, master plans, all of the documents that I think we struggled to manage in separate places. I'm trying to pull them all into one place so that everyone comes to the retreat with a three-ring binder with the information. And then those binders will be distributed April 30th, which gives you a whole week to review them before the retreat. I've been going over the agenda with the Mayor Pro Tem, and I think we do want to share with the council the information. Also, Chris Johnson is going to play a key role in providing you his professional opinion about the facility, about the business, and about the potential. So with that, the majority of the workshop is you guys discussing how you want to move forward. But we wanted to make sure that everyone has the information current and readily available. So moving along.
Katie.
Go ahead.
Is it possible to get a digital, is it possible to get a digital copy rather than a three-ring binder paper copy? Or maybe an addition to?
Yes, we will scan it and give you the, it's probably about a one-inch binder, Councilmember Seavers. But yeah, we'll scan and give it to you electronically.
You may need to break that up into a couple of different files based on the issue.
Might be all that way now, but.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
And then also, the only recruitment that we have underway right now is for the Salary Commission. And what we're thinking is we would start advertising, have interviews in the June timeframe. The goal would be that the commission could meet before the end of the year so they can become familiar with their responsibilities and the timing for their consideration of the council's compensation. Overall, I think the goal is that whatever they decide, then it would come back as part of our 2022 budget. So on that note, I'll just go down to my second page and last page. It's busy, or maybe this is a good thing, or maybe we just wanted to identify anything that we're thankful for that's on our calendar. So I'll go very quickly. This Saturday, the Spring Volki Waste Event is at Town Square. Everyone that has solid waste services should have gotten a coupon. You can dispose of clean green, bulky waste, and goodwill will be there to accept donations, unlimited. Bring your coupons. Drive Takeback, Trent Elementary is the closest one that's being recognized, the same day, April 24th. World Clarity is a special meeting a week from tonight on April 27th. I don't have the agenda in the PowerPoint yet. Our goal is to get that by the end of the week and share with all of you. This is a facilitated workshop with Tom Brubaker. It is scheduled to go from 6:00 to 8:00, but we did post it 6:00 to 9:00, just in case. I've already mentioned the Mobile Vaccine Clinic, May 7th. We also have the Trailhead Retreat on May 7th. May 15th is Farmer's Market. The Rotary Memorial Day Ceremony is May 31st. Our mayor is the keynote speaker. The garage sale is scheduled for June 18th and 19th. The book sale is, I have tentative here, I think it will, I'll confirm later on, but it's just on Saturday, June 19th. Kewala's Movie Night is tentatively being discussed for July 3rd. Fireworks, July 4th, and then the Coal Horn Tournament, Cornhole Tournament that we mentioned earlier, would be late August. And Jen, if you're still on the phone, did you want to give us just a very quick overview of facility reservations? You received an update today from Department of Health?
Yeah, so we've had gray area, whether or not we could reserve picnic shelters and whatnot in our parks with the current guidance. And we did receive word today that we can reserve shelters and such for private parties, birthday parties, barbecues, et cetera. And we have guidance for that. So that's a big, huge step for us to be able to provide that to reservation holders and organizers.
Mayor, that concludes my report. I will ask one more quick question of Jen. I've had this a couple of times, I forgot to mention it. Can we provide something on the website, Jen, with regards to updated information about checking out pickleball equipment? I don't know where we stand with that. I think there's a lot of people out there, they're learning. The Hub's been putting on some workshops, and they're anxious to get out there and use it, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, I can check into that. And, yeah, there is no guidance on that, so to speak. So let me do a little research. But, yeah, we can look at moving forward with that. Right now, we've had it on pause, checking out equipment. But particularly now that City Hall's open and people can come down to check out the keys, that's definitely something we can consider.
Great, thank you. All right, I think we are done with reports, unless I missed anybody. Okay, so workshop discussions. Lisa Key, you are on. You're going through the landscape, proposed landscape ordinance change ordinance. And the Planning Commission's been working really hard on this, so I'm anxious to see what it's all about this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Todd, can you pull up my presentation, please?
So so, um, we began the process of overhauling our landscape ordinance approximately, uh, oh, late 20, fall of 2019. Planning Commission has had eight workshops and a public hearing on this ordinance update. And it, this came about because, uh, because of challenges we were seeing in the way our landscape code was structured and in frustrations we were hearing from business owners, both who are trying to develop, but also in terms of what the impacts were for maintenance, et cetera. And so we started out by looking at kind of a, um, the overview of our comp plan, what our comp plan says about landscaping. And basically, in in broad brush strokes, our comp plan talks about our natural setting being important important and landscaping should enhance it. It does emphasize water conserving landscape and use of landscape for screening and aesthetics for roadway corridors and parking lots. It does stress that trees are important and tree conservation is preferred, and also that tree diversity is encouraged. Those are the kind of the big picture ideas in the comp plan. Next slide, please. So we started, we we, so we started looking at first what the problems were. And by the way, through the course of this process, we engaged sort of a key informants team of people and landscape architects, landscapers, people who do landscape design in our community to get some feedback on where they saw challenges and whatnot. And some of the things I'd like, I'd like to give you an overview of some of the things that, um, that we see in our existing landscape corridor. So we have basically four categories, um, parking lots. We require perimeter landscaping and islands, in vehicular areas, parking and drives. We're trying to screen them from streets, uh, from streets, neighborhoods, and structures on site. Also, we're trying to create buffers between non-compatible zones and really to screen them from adjacent residential zones. And chemical loading areas and refuse containment, trying to screen from view of everybody. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So I wanted to give you an example of what our code requires. This is a real site. This is one of the first site plans that I dealt with when I came to the City of Liberty Lake. It's a one and a quarter acre site. Um, you might recognize it. It's where the, uh, Wake Up Coffee and the the dentist is. On this one and a quarter acre site, our landscape code required 40 trees in addition to the existing street trees that were both on a Stanford Lane and on Country Vista. Next slide, please. Beyond that, it it required a total shrub count of 520 on this site. Our code right now is designed to, um, to have a full planting, like maturity, instantaneously. Problem is, let that, let that grow and develop over, over, um, a five-year period, and all of a sudden, it's overgrown and hard to maintain. Next slide, please. And so I I just wanted to point out some of the key ideas. So we have our street trees along the right-of-way, and then we require a 10-foot buffer at the right-of-way. We also require, um, a five-foot landscape buffer along neighboring property, neighboring property lines. And if a commercial zone happens to be adjacent to a residential zone, we also have a 20-foot buffer that's required. In addition to, um, separating, uh, parking aisles with a landscape buffer in the middle, and then, um, you can only have 10 cars. You need every 11th spot, you need to have a, uh, a landscape buffer. Next slide, please. Oh, I've, I've forgotten. There's also five foot of landscaping around the building. What's weird about it is we try and buffer different things. We have different, different, uh, buffer widths when you're trying to screen that residential property from a non-compatible zone. It's a 20-foot buffer. Businesses along I-90 are required to have a 15-foot landscape buffer. Adjacent right-of-way is a 10-foot buffer, and neighboring properties is a five-foot buffer, and five foot and five foot. But what's really weird about it is, um, so we have the wider buffers that, uh, to address an intensity of separation. But the, the count for trees and shrubs is exactly the same for each one of these plantings. It's based on linear feet, not square feet. So the five-foot buffer is intensely, um, landscaped, whereas the 20-foot buffer is very sparsely landscaped. So it kind of, it doesn't do what it, what it, it's intended to do. Next slide, please. So we started the process by, again, working with this group of stakeholders in the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission basically identified, um, a number of goals for the landscape code amendments. We wanted to to get away from our prescriptive methodology and really provide for more designer creativity and using performance-based guidelines. We we recognize that the, that it was important to maintain the tree canopy in the city while allowing for some flexibility in different configurations. We did want to maintain the street scape aesthetics, but we also wanted to be able to view businesses from the right-of-way. We also wanted to emphasize and enhance safety considerations in landscape design with specific consideration to bicycle and pedestrian safety, vehicular ingress and egress, and SECTED principles, which is crime prevention through environmental design, which our chief knows well. Next slide, please. Um, additional landscape codes were to reduce the amount of maintenance for owners, both for snow and plants, and reduce initial cost of construction. We also thought it was important that we acknowledge adjacencies for required buffering, like zones and uses may not, certain zones and, uh, next to certain uses may not need buffering, and maybe add buffers for other than vehicular areas. We also wanted to, uh, we thought it was important to reduce water usage and incentivize the use of native plants in zero escaping. And finally, we wanted to incentivize the use of existing mature trees rather than replacement. So again, the goals of the, our amendments were very much in line with what comp plan called for. Next slide, please. So I I'm gonna, on a very high level summarize these. You have a copy of the proposed amendments in your packet. The major changes, um, related to landscape buffers and interior parking lot landscaping. But let's start with the landscape buffers first. We basically eliminated three pages of text and replaced it with a table that, um, that, a table that identifies standards for different buffer types. We have four buffer types, a visual screen, a visual relief buffer, a see-through buffer, and aesthetic separation. And that table details the purpose, the width, what are the required trees, shrubs and ground cover for each, and shrubs are not required everywhere, and trees are not required everywhere. And by the way, the required trees and shrubs are based upon square footage rather than linear footage, and also based on what class of tree is being proposed. So, so, um, to, again, to be responsive to the fact that a larger tree over, over time needs more room to grow. Um, we also address alternatives and exceptions to those rules, so some, some flexibility in the code. And then we have, we also have a new table that talks about, um, adjacent zones and uses. So, so if zoning on the site is, um, mixed use and all non-residential uses against, uh, a residential zone, it's a, a, um, lower intensity screen, but if it's a residential, industrial, any use against a residential zone or use, it's a more intensive screen. We also have a new table, again, in a new table, we we provide kind of the, the, the buffer requirements for different settings. The I-90 frontage, the street frontage, parking lot perimeter, interior lot, and building perimeters that, again, refer back to the, uh, the, the screen, the, the standards for the different buffer types. So we've basically taken three pages and boiled it down into three tables to make it easier, more approachable. And, and the way it's laid out is really provides a little, quite a bit more flexibility. Next slide, please. The major changes for parking lot standards are that, um, we've eliminated the requirement for islands and simply said, um, every parking stall needs to be within 50 feet of a shade tree or within 100 feet for a large scale, scale, uh, or 100 feet of every parking stall when you're dealing with a large-scale building, which is a building over 20,000 square feet because of the scale of the parking lot to the building. Um, and those trees, the proximity to trees, you can use your perimeter landscaping. You can put islands as you need to, provided the minimum area for tree planting is at 100 square feet. Um, we also do require vegetative or non-vegetative ground cover around, in the the landscape area around the trees, but shrubs are optional. We also exempt tractor-trailer RVs, heavy equipment, parking and display areas, loading areas, et cetera, from interior parking lot requirements because it just doesn't make sense in where you're, where you're storing your tractor-trailers. Next slide, please. We also had some minor revisions, um, related to substantial vegetation. We did talk, right now, um, trees are encouraged to be preserved if they're greater than 12 inches. We thought a substantial tree was six inches, as opposed to putting in a new tree. We encourage it, um, but it's not, but if, um, if the tree is in conflict with, and this is for new landscaping, i- if the tree is in conflict with, um, driveway location utilities, required infrastructure, the building footprint, obviously you can't, and then you have to replace it elsewhere on the site. The applicability section, we just cleaned it up a little bit because basically it listed, um, certain things that aren't, certain types of development that don't require, um, landscape plans and and any project that didn't require, um, the, um, design review process. We simply restated what the applicability for design review and cleaned that up a little bit. Also, for parking lots that are less than 11 spaces, we're not requiring the plans to have a landscape architect stamp on them. We are requiring that native and adaptive plants, um, be used. That's related to the water usage issue. It also, um, we also added definitions to the definition section for that. And we did create an exception for, uh, zero escaping, that no, basically, no irrigation system is required for, that's the point of zero escaping, is that you don't need irrigation. And finally, we removed a section on, uh, sharp shopping cart storage and because that's just not landscaping. So that is the sum total of the changes that the Planning Commission, um, has reviewed and proposed. Next slide, please. And, uh, this will be coming back to you in the form of a, uh, a public hearing, first read ordinance, fourth. And we'll plan to have the second read ordinance, the second, uh, meeting in May. And the Planning Commission did, um, recommend the amendments for your approval. And so with that, I wonder if you have questions?
Right, Councilmember Leifert. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. Lisa, is there any plans in the, uh, pretty immediate future to navigate our way towards more zero escaping?
Yeah, so, so what we, what we intended to do, um, again, it's, there's, um, I think it's difficult to require, and it's, um, it doesn't meet everyone's aesthetic sensibilities right now. So what we tried to do with the zero escaping is incentivize it. There are some requirements in there, um, related to irrigation systems. We, we, again, we, we exempted zero escaping from that. Um, the other thing that we, uh, uh, again, trying to push people more towards, uh, use of native and adaptive species. And I think that will help a lot with that issue as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Seavers?
Lisa, this is all great. Um, man, Planning Commission's put a lot of work in on this. The one, one thing that stuck out at me was, um, and I apologize, apologies if I misunderstood that the, uh, the 50-foot radius for, um, if you go back a couple of slides, uh, every parking stall will be within 50 feet of a, of some sort of a tree. Uh, if it's a normal building, or 100 feet for a larger-scale building. Do you mind just kind of maybe talking through why there's a difference for a large building versus a small building?
Um, it has to do with the scale of the building and the scale of the parking lot. And I want to point out that this is something that we already allowed as an alternative, an alternate methodology. And, um, it's worked pretty well for larger-scale buildings. We, uh, we used it at the junior high. We used it for the junior high parking lot. We used it for the parking lot at the high school, although those trees aren't in yet, so you can't see that. But you'll be able to see it on the red. And it really, um, I mean, we're still talking about a lot of trees, and it's, in the larger-scale buildings, you will for sure have to have islands. But what, we did some, we, we did some, um, we did some layouts for parking lots, different configured parking lots for a 5,000-square-foot building, which would be the 50 feet. And it really is possible to do that without, um, without the, uh, without doing islands, which is a big deal for, for snow removal and snow storage on smaller, on smaller, uh, buildings, smaller lots. Larger, larger, uh, buildings, you're not going to be able to get away from it. You'll have to do something. But how you do it, if you decide that you want to have a planting strip, um, separating two back-to-back, um, strips of parking, you know, that's, uh, that's certainly one way to do it. Or if you just want to have some centralized, uh, islands that, um, that also maybe help direct traffic. And we saw the high school did that a lot with the, in terms of their landscape design.
Excellent. Is there any consideration in the plan for, uh, for tree type, uh, you know, type two versus type three? Tree trees and and those plant, I'm, I'm thinking of scale of tree.
Yes.
And the larger, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. So, so we have different, um, the, the number of trees per square foot varies depending upon whether it's a type, type one, type two, or type three.
Thank you.
It's actually in the table. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Councilmember Foyer?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, it's a lot of information. How many meetings did you say you had, Lisa, with the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission, we did, uh, eight workshops and the public hearing.
That's incredible. Thank you to the Planning Commission and Lisa. Uh, two questions I have. Uh, the first one is, how do these changes impact existing designs going forward as they need to deal with overgrowth and such? My second question is, uh, who other than the Planning Commission participated in the discussion? You said there were some private parties.
Yeah, so we had, so we had kind of, uh, a, uh, working group of landscape architects. Yeah, so we had so we had kind of a a working group of landscape architects, landscape designers, landscape installers. Um, uh, so it it was a, it was a good group of, it was a group of, I think, about a handful of um our frequent flyers in terms of uh in terms of landscape architects we're dealing on uh off the top of my head. So Mike Tarrell was involved, um Susan Moss was involved, um. I'm trying to, I'm gonna, I I I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not going to remember all the names because it was last year that we met with them.
Very well respected landscape type professionals. Thank you.
Um, and you had another question, um.
Yeah, just looking uh um looking for how does, how do these changes uh impact the existing designs that we have?
So this is what I'll say about that. So our landscape ordinance is in the development code. And there's nothing that requires people to um maintain their landscaping over time in terms of they can remove it, they can do whatever they need to do to keep it neat and tidy. If it's overgrown, that's one thing, there there is some code within maintenance code related to that. But in terms of once they, once they've added it, or once they have developed their project, it's tied to the building permit. Once the building permits approved, they they do what they want. Um, what I will say about this, part of the intent to this is that if we can make this simple and more uh cleaner and easier to maintain, we'll have less attrition on that. I will also say that with um developments that have been going forward and permits that are in review now, we have been telling, um, we have been just telling uh uh the developers that there is a change coming in the code. Um, and that that we give them the option if they want to bond for their landscaping um when they're ready to get a temporary CO, they can do that. We have one large uh project, Huntwood um manufacturing with their Huntwood's addition uh that they just uh they're in a temporary CEO now um because they wanted to wait on their landscaping until um until the new code was in place. So we have, we we have been communicating it. The other thing I'll say about these part, the parking lot, some of what we're what we're allowing in the parking lot, we already allowed through an alternate method. So we do, and we push that quite a bit, particularly for larger developments where the code really was um had an excessive impact on those larger um commercial developments.
Thank you.
Sure.
The other, go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, Lisa, I had a question about the significant vegetation section, ten three C two. Um, I recognize the shift of a of a, you know, size check from twelve inches to six inches, but I'm curious about the addition uh for the non right of way tree. And I just want to try and understand from my own perception to operationalize this. I foresee, you know, a five acre parcel, it's got a maybe a hundred year old western large. Uh, we believe it meets the test if it's greater than six inches in diameter. But it seems like the code says, but if you wanted to put a parking lot there, you could take it down. Does that sound right?
Oh, so again, what it says is we're encouraging them to preserve it. It's on private property. We are encouraging them to preserve it, but um in my experience, um uh most site plans are trying to get ten gallons in a five gallon bucket. And so it's very challenging. And if the, if they go through the process, if they can't avoid the building footprint being where the tree is, or they can't avoid um required infrastructure needs to be there, driveway access needs to be there, et cetera. Um, uh, I think that they will have to replace it. So I I don't the the language, we never had the requirement on private property. It was, it was on, um, it was on.
Public right of way.
And what what I'm, what we're trying to get at is we're trying to encourage people, recognize, identify your significant trees, um, see if you can design around them where you can, because it's a value to the community. So it's not, it's not a black and white requirement, and and I will say this. Um, should this shouldn't in ordinance, but this is one that's saying that you need to try to. You're, we're trying to encourage people to raise awareness on the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I value the utility of the word shall rather than should, and I recognize that. But it seems like we're blending the word shall with unless you want to put a parking lot there. It just seems like it's a.
If it's necessary, i- if it's required infrastructure, because again, what I will say is that what you will find is that most sites struggle to 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 fulfill all their requirements just because they're always trying to get more on a smaller property.
Okay, appreciate the clarification.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it. We look forward to just coming back to us uh for a first read in public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, on to additional exciting stuff.
Exciting stuff. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, once again, with the council's consideration, you might notice a slight change tonight. In the general business, we have consent agenda under A and then action items. The path we've always been together was recommended to try to separate it at this point. So the idea would be is I'll make a motion on consent agenda of all three, and then they could be seconded and then have a discussion. So hopefully that moves with, meets with the uh council's approval. So I make a motion on consent agenda one, approve March thirtieth, two thousand twenty one special city council minutes. Two, April sixth, two thousand twenty one city council minutes. Three, approve April twentieth, two thousand twenty one vouchers, the amount of seven hundred twenty eight thousand, six hundred ninety four dollars and seventy three cents.
Second. Seconded. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor? I'll see, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda. Please say aye. Oh, sorry. Annie, sorry to see your hand.
I voted early. Sorry.
Okay, early and often. Um, all in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I, I, Councilmember Reivers, I think that was a delayed um approval. That's okay.
I was in favor.
It's okay. I just want to make sure I'm I'm missing things. All right, Mayor Protem, you're on.
I was excited to see everybody. Let's move the agenda forward. Action item B, action items, motion to approve amendment number one to task authorization number two zero two zero dash zero eight with parametrics for additional engineering and design work, legacy ridge intersection signal, change in the original contract amount from fifty one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars to sixty one thousand seven hundred eighty dollars.
Second. Moving second, okay, uh, discussion, um, we, Ben, Ben or we?
This is the fourth leg, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. So Ben, Ben, you want to touch on it real quick, or Katie, would you like?
I can just touch on it really quick. Um, the city network analysis and scope of services was to describe, was to design a three-legged signal like legacy ridge and country vista. Um, in coordination with the adjacent property owner, the mayor was able to coordinate um an interest from them to add a fourth leg to that signal for the northern property. So this additional scope adds um, this additional contract value adds scope to the four-legged signal. And the increment of that fourth leg would would be at a developer agreement covered by the property owner that will come back to the council for approval.
Yep. So that avoids us from having to redo something later.
Correct. And it's more efficient. And we all know that if you're on the north side of country vista, the vicinity of Home Depot, consigned furniture, and some of the other businesses that are there, that left-hand turning movement is getting to be challenging. You have to have patience.
And Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, a question. If this uh project were to have advanced into its three, I call it three-legged configuration, at a later date, should the developer choose, should the landowner uh choose to develop the property? Who bears the burden of improving the intersection?
The developer. So that the the development agreement would be for them to pay, it went around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their piece of that.
So, correct. So let me make sure I understand the question, um, Councilmember Dunn. If a developer comes in and asks for additional public improvements that support their development, the cost of those improvements are there. If your, um, the efficiency of construction and design um incentivized, I think, the property owner to coordinate with us rather than to do it on their own at some future date.
Yeah, I I I offer that as an observation in that I think we recently um purchased land from this developer at a premium. And it is an interesting observation that we are now providing uh services for their future development. Um, I just want to reflect on that.
Yeah, so so this, yeah, so this piece is for the engineering, they are paying for the the rest of the.
The infrastructure.
Yeah, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the development agreement is for. And that'll come back um hopefully in the next meeting or two for.
You are correct. There was an acquisition on the south side of country vista landowner that we paid dollars for the property we needed for the uh Kramer Road overpass. That is correct.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving uh amendment number one to the task order, um, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, motion passive.
Action item two, motion to confirm Mayor's appointments of Chris Cargill as a voting member and Conrad Mann as an adjunct member to the planning commission.
Second. Moving second by Councilmember Woodruff. Um, any, any discussion um or questions? I know Chris Cargill, Lucy, was here. Are you still on? Yeah, there, Chris is here. I don't see um Conrad Band. Um, Chris, if you want, if if you're up for it, if you want to take this as short span to introduce yourself, I think most everybody got familiar with you uh during the the council interview process.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to uh being able to serve the citizens of the community. And that's uh, that's what I told the mayor when I had a had a conversation with her uh last week. And planning commission is one of the most important, if not the most important commission in the city. So um it'll be my um my honor to be able to serve the citizens and and hopefully make your job a heck of a lot easier as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And I'll just give a shout out. I don't believe Conrad is here. So is there any discussion on the appointments? Or comments? No? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of appointing Chris Cargill and Conrad Fran? Please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Chris and Conrad.
B, action item three, approved, uh, motion to approve quote from executive to assist the city of Livery Lake with office three sixty five email mitigation. But migration, I'm sorry, an MFA if, MFA implementation to twenty nine thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars. Approve the monthly quote number one zero six seven six seven three for office three sixty five, the amount of one thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and forty five cents.
Second. So, thanks. And so so just uh just a clarification, this was motion and voted on at the last meeting, somehow we missed getting a second.
Right.
So nothing has changed since the the discussion at the, at the last meeting. We just want to make sure we we get the proper motion second and um we can take the revote if nobody has any um discussion or question. All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Uh, so it looks like so, um, we have a a introduction of upcoming agenda items. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do want to mention just some challenges we've been having on IT. And I just want the council to know that, you know, Todd Henderson has been spending a lot of hours making sure that our systems are up and running and the security is there, but um it it is challenging. And so I just wanted to mention that, and I really appreciate the approval of the uh additional contract with this thing.
Yeah, and we'll, and we will probably do something else coming forward later with uh with regards to a more um lengthy IT roadmap that we we would need, and we'll hopefully be able to pay with, before with our American Rescue Plan dollars as well.
Okay, so our next um council meeting on day six, the following items. Um, we do have a follow-up special meeting at six P M on Robert's Rules of Order. And what I was thinking on this um in coordination with Mayor Protem, that we would take the existing rules and procedures after you've had the workshop with Tom Brubaker, and we could uh discuss changes or updates that you guys want to do. So kind of that would be um in line for the six P M main course workshop. Then at seven P M, we would have the introduction of Kyle Dixon, our new finance director, as well as hopefully our new police officer, Mike Zhao. Um, and then on the workshops, we have three, an IOA agreement with S R T C, sign code amendment um that has gone through the planning commission process. And then the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty seven transportation improvement program tip, that's the acronym for it. And this is an important um document because we use it to get funding. And if you don't have a project in there, you can't get funding for the project. And then action items outside of minutes and vouchers, we have the um contract for pedestrian flashy beacon. We have the, we also have the confirmation by the mayor of the um new Livery Lake Municipal Library trustee. We um will have a a contract to award phone phone services to Vatera. We will hopefully be accepting bids for Kramer Parkway repairs that um Ben covered earlier. We have a development agreement, which we did discuss on the fourth leg of the traffic signal at Legacy Ridge um and Appleway. And then finally, we will be asking for your support of the IOA agreement with S R T C. There, that concludes, we are busy now.
It will be. Thank you. Um, so next up is another opportunity for citizen comments.
Mayor, I, I have one other thing I wanted to mention. I'm sorry. Um, we also are having set a public hearing on the landscape code. The Central Valley School District annunciation calendar, the first three to adopt the landscape code amendment. And then finally, we do have an executive session with the council related to um potential litigation on nuisance property. So we will be um very busy on main day.
Thank you.
Great morning.
It's sometime that week. Uh, okay, citizen comments. Todd, do we have anybody?
We do. We have Steve Peterson.
Hey, Mr. Peterson, um, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you guys doing today? You look like you're very busy. So I did want to make a comment. And that's over the past four months, the city has been investigating Mayor Shane Brickner's term of office. The city commissioned an independent investigator to ascertain the facts. That investigation has concluded and resulted in a letter drafted by the city council during an April thirteenth meeting. With the investigation completed, I would ask that that report by the investigator, in its entirety, be released to the public to ensure transparency in this matter. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have anybody else? Okay, one more time going uh for citizen comments. All right, we have lots, lots more participation in today visually, but not, not, we haven't really stepped up our citizen comments here. Need to get on that. All right, so next week, we um do have an executive session per R C W forty two dot thirty dot one ten one G. Uh, there will not be any action taken in that, in that meeting. When we come back, we will adjourn. Mayor Protem, about how long do you think we need for that?
Uh, twenty minutes.
That's gonna say thirty to be safe?
To be safe.
Okay, so it is now currently, let me check my rise in time, at eight forty three to give um us some, us some time to log off. And while I'm back on, we'll start the executive session at eight fifty. Um, and then we will plan on being, um, hopefully being done by nine twenty. Thanks, everybody. And council members, um, the executive session meeting call went out, I think, pretty, pretty close to the beginning of our workshops. You may need to check your email for the link. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.